Once again, welcome to the city of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, January the 7th, 2015. As I mentioned before, Happy New Year. With that, Chief, can I ask you to conduct the invocation, please?
Please rise.
Dear God in heaven, we thank you immensely for the countless blessings you bestow upon us each and every day, each and every day, those we are able to see and those we do not. The recent tragedies involving the senseless murder of several police officers in New York City, Florida, and other states remind us of the fearless dedication and courage our police officers, firefighters, and military personnel have in their duty to serve, help, and protect. Governor Rick Scott has proclaimed this week as First Responder Appreciation Week in Florida, paying tribute to the courage and commitment of those who protect nearly 20 million Florida residents. Be with the families of those brave police officers whose lives were so violently cut short. Strengthen them in their faith and help those left behind to cope with their tragic losses. Today, we hear yet another irrational and heartbreaking act of violence, this time in France, where 12 people were savagely murdered. We ask that you also comfort and strengthen those who has lost loved ones in Paris. Help your people, Lord. Strengthen us in faith, love, mercy, courage, wisdom, charity, and compassion. Make us better people to better serve you and our brothers and sisters around us. Help and heal those in our community who are ill, lonely, or frail, and help this commission to make the best decisions for the benefits of all in our fine city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Captain, for the pleasure of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will call, please?
I will call. Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. With your permission, I want to take out of order an item, which is a public hearing that has been advertised for 7:30, and it's a little after that. Can you call the item, or can you call item 11A, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11 on their new business agenda items, item 11A. This is a public hearing, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami granting Gables Gate Tower LLC and Gables Gate Tower II LLC's petition to close road from southwest 21st Street between 66th Avenue and 67th Avenue, providing for an effective date by mayor and city commission. And mayor and members of the city commission, this public hearing was advertised on December 24th, 2014, following statutory requirements.
Okay. Can we start with the presentation, please? Mr. Lasarte, welcome to the city of West Miami.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nice to see you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to all of you.
Happy New Year.
Manager, madam clerk.
Thank you.
Felix Lasarte with office at 3250 Northeast 1st Avenue. Let me tell you something, before I start the presentation, you know, I do a lot of presentations, you know, in the county and in different cities, and I will tell you that the invocation that your police chief did was really one of the best invocations I've heard. That was really, really, really good. Yeah, it was really good. I believe this request is simple. You've seen the buildings going up, one of the buildings going up on 67th Avenue. There is a small street that is in between what is currently going up and a proposed building that hopefully we're going to be coming before you to get an approval. And what we're asking the, this commission to do is to vacate that public road because what we want to do is twofold, and I don't know if you have an angle, I don't believe, I don't know if you can see it, Commissioner.
Commissioner Blanes, can you see that?
Yeah, if you guys could see it.
I have the vision.
Oh, you have, oh, great.
Yes.
The idea is that we are going to have an entrance feature coming off 67th Avenue, and that entrance feature is going to serve both towers, the one to the north and the one to the south side of the road. And then, on the western portion of the road, we're going to have a dog park and a recreational open area for the residents of these two towers. We've agreed to maintain that road, we've agreed to do the improvements on that road, and to obviously provide whatever access the city would ever need in terms of utilities or improvements or anything that the city would ever need, they would have an easement to be able to use that and obviously not have any loss of service. This process, once you, if you so choose to approve it, obviously will be renewed by Miami-Dade County because they obviously have traffic jurisdiction all over the county. We have had preliminary conversations with the county, and they believe that it would be a proper use to vacate this road. I think it's going to be a, I think it's really going to create a sense of place for both buildings as opposed to a, just a standalone building. It's going to create its own little village, and I think it's going to bring a lot of harmony, you know, for the residents of that tower. I think it's just going to be a nice, a nice mix, and it's going to create, again, a sense of place. I hope, you know, you approve it tonight, and if there's any questions that you have, we have our traffic engineer who has studied this, Richard Garcia, and obviously, you know, Tony Castro and Robert Suris, the owners of the project, they're here as well.
Thank you. I would like to hear from Mr. Garcia, if you don't mind.
In a nutshell. In a nutshell, yeah. Good evening, and Happy New Year to all. Yes, that was a very nice invocation, one of the best I've probably heard also, mayor, members. My name is Richard Garcia, address is 865 Northwest 98th Street. I'm a traffic engineer. I was asked to prepare a traffic study for the street closure. As Mr. Lasarte pointed out, there's a criteria that Miami-Dade County has for any street closures. It was done, to give you just a little brief history on it, it was done a long time ago, that criteria, when the city of Coral Gables decided to close off some of their streets due to some of the neighborhood issues that occurred back in the late eighties. And so, we adhere strictly to their procedure because regardless of what the city decides, that could ultimately decide whether the street closure. It's a simple criteria. It's basically to look at what is the existing levels of service, which is how traffic engineers measure, how traffic is flowing. We have very good levels of service at the intersections around this project. Then the idea is to take the traffic that's on that street that's going to be closed and redistribute it to see what the impact is going to be. They don't ever want to close a street that's going to be detrimental to other streets, other intersections. So, we did that analysis, and we find it still meets levels of service. 21st is actually, it's sort of like under construction right now, and there's some staging out there, so it's somewhat underutilized right now, but we did notice that there is some traffic intrusion. That's when traffic tries to avoid a signal, like the one on Coral Way, and so they cut through neighborhood streets. And the reason we're pretty sure it's traffic intrusion because in the AM, it's sort of going southbound to the east, and then in the PM, it's the opposite, you know? So, and I'm sure you're probably even more aware of it than we were, but we did notice that in the field when we were doing the data collection. So, we did a traffic impact study that also looks at the impacts of the full development of both phases, and we also meet levels of service for that. It was a pretty extensive study, so trying to keep it short and brief, but if you have any particular questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, I have a question. How do you see this impacting the residents behind, in a positive way or a negative way?
Yeah, certainly, I think, and that's what we reported, that this would be a benefit. It really would act like a traffic calming, and I apologize to be looking at my telephone when you called me up, but I was looking at the TY LIN graphic that was up earlier, and I took a picture of it, you know, because I noticed that there's existing traffic circles, and they're proposing new ones for traffic calming measures. This is a similar type of traffic calming measure, especially if there's cars currently or in the future using this to cut through to avoid a signal. So, it could be, you know, looked at as a traffic calming measure, but in any event, we see it as a positive benefit. It's a very short street, and then you have connectivity, obviously, to the north and the south of it.
Because, I mean, the reason I ask that question is, one of the concerns, or actually the main concern with residents of the city is, you know, if this is going to impact, you know, the residential area, and personally, I see it as a benefit, but I just wanted to confirm you as an engineer, confirm my statement, you know, and that's it.
Yeah, I would echo that, that it would be considered a benefit.
Any other questions from?
Mr. Ryan, I do have a question. What exactly is going to be behind the doggy park? What will be the closing of, what am I looking at? If I'm a resident facing the project, what am I looking at that is actually going to close the road?
So, let me answer that. Robert Suris, principal of state companies. Basically, what you're going to see is, you're going to see continuity in the sidewalk, so it's going to look like one block from the backside that'll be fenced and it'll be landscaped. So, there will be no street.
Right, that's the doggy park, so what you're talking about is going to be behind the doggy park.
So, behind the doggy park, there will be a fence and a landscape buffer along with a sidewalk that will connect both blocks. So, the block, the sidewalk will be continuous, it'll be just like any other block, as far as visibility, it's just going to be one solid block.
When you say fence.
We're going to have, you know, there's going to be dogs there, so we don't want to.
Like a chain link fence, what kind of fence?
No, no.
No, a fence size.
No, we're probably going to put some kind of picket fence, something that's decorative and, you know, that flows with the architecture of the building, but it will be protected so that those animals don't get out of that area.
Okay, perfect.
You know? One other thing that hasn't been talked about is the way the buildings are stacking the parking right now, they're both, they're coming in from both the north and the south side of each building. The way we designed it is, the bulk of the vehicles are in the basement on the south side and on the second and third floor on the north side. Those two ramps are actually feeding into that street, so literally 60% of the cars that are going to be visiting this site will only have access to get to their parking through this street, taking it completely away from your residential neighborhoods. So, part of the impact is that we will have no impact on the rear neighbors. We're trying to keep it a residential neighborhood, so by doing that street closure, we basically keep all the traffic on 67th Avenue and that entrance to the buildings. Obviously, we still have an entrance on either side of the other two streets, but it is, like I said, it's going to be, you know, 30% of the vehicles that'll be coming in through 67th to 21st or 22nd to each individual building. So, I think in that sense, it's very positive. It keeps a lot of this traffic to the main corridors, and the intent is just to do that, to keep the neighborhood very friendly.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
Now, I just make a simple comment, that I see that in this way, the back of the project, the traffic will not impact our neighbors, because the traffic will be most of that is through the 67th Avenue, Coral Way, and the others. So, our neighbors will be out of the impacting. Good.
This time, I would like to open the public hearing. Public hearing open. Anyone want to speak on the subject? Absolutely.
I didn't sign up, but.
The clerk will take care of that.
Elliot Asbell, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157. I really didn't, I saw this on the agenda, and I really had no intention to speak. I'm totally in favor of it. What really has gotten me up to speak is the visual. I and other people can go back to the originations, or the embryo, if you will, when we talked about upgrading the zoning and what have you. It's been a long years. It was another project before this that didn't get off the ground, and based on economics. But I have to tell you, I have to stand here and say, I'm proud to have been a part of this. This is better than any vision I had at that point in time, and I couldn't be happier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to congratulate Mr. Asbell and recognize you because years ago, when I started with the revitalization of the zoning area, I created a committee from the revitalization, and I appointed you the chairman of the committee, and finally, and thanks God, the committee did a good job, you was the chairman, and thanks to you, you know, months over a year, we were working on that.
Thanks to the wisdom of the commission at that point.
But you was part of the.
Thanks to the public that got educated and then went along.
Yeah, but you was part of the effort, you know, to create this. Thank you very much. I just want to recognize.
Yeah, I echo that because, I mean, we have members sitting over here, including the vice mayor, as I recall as well.
Me, too.
And that started, and they were part of this committee, that had the vision to take West Miami to the future, and thank you for that. Anybody else on the public hearing? Close the public hearing, back to the table. Any further comments?
I'd like to thank Robert and Tony for, and his team for doing this great project. I feel the same way as Mr. Asbill does. I could have never envisioned something better than this, and what you're asking for tonight is definitely going to enhance the project, and the quality of life of the people that are going to live there is going to be so much better. And as stated, it is going to help the adjacent residential area, and of course, improve the quality of life of the other residents, too. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
I, all of us here have been waiting for this for a very, very long time, very long time, so 10 years, 10 years. So, thank you, and congratulations, you guys, you have a great team and done great work. Thank you.
Mayor.
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm glad to come in during the exciting part.
Well, you, no.
I'm glad to be here. I was there, I was sitting there.
I beg to the fur.
I'm glad to be on this side doing the exciting part, yes, yes.
That is true.
So, I'd just like to add one thing, you know, it's very difficult to get people to accept changes, and this neighborhood has been the way it's been for the last four years. So, we want to thank the commission for having the vision to grasp the idea, support the idea, and back us up in this concept. You know, a lot of times, developers come up and they promise a lot, and they don't perform. We're not those types of developers. We like to, you know, when we say we're going to do something, we do it. The intent here is only to improve not only our buildings but the neighborhood because it only adds value to our building. So, I think that our interests are aligned, and unlike the belief that a lot of people have that, you know, that developers really don't care about the neighborhoods, that's really not our case. We believe that there has to be synergies between what we're doing and what the neighborhood is for it to work and basically, you know, capture value. So, I want to commend you, the commission, the mayor, the commissioners. I know, Ronda, you just got in here, but you know, you would have had your support, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Ronda, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I make a motion.
I second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
I vote yes.
5-0, item passes.
And thank you again, I'm not going to, I already said many, many times how happy I am about this, not only this building, but, you know, how the city of West Miami is shaping up. So, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you leave the item, I think it should, it's important that the record reflect that our office did not receive any concerns, negative or positive, from the public notice process. We did, as the city clerk reported, we did advertise as required by law. As you know, our city attorney was unable to attend this evening, but he asked me to read this information or actually report it for the permanent record of the city, and there were no concerns expressed also to Mr. Penna's office on the part of the citizens. So, let the record reflect that.
Thank you. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please. Can we go back to the?
To the original order?
The original order of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That will be item four, presentation of the minutes.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes, and I make a motion.
I second, approve.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, item five.
Okay, we have, we have, those, that motion and second was to approve the December 3rd minutes. We need also the December 11th special city commission meeting minutes, and Vice Mayor Blanes abstains.
Motion, second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Item five, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city commission. First, I want to start out by wishing you and your family members and the residents of the city a very Happy New Year. That being said, my report for this meeting includes the following items. Per my email to all of you, we were notified that the city of West Miami, along with the city of Doral, have been designated by the Health Department as the 2015 State Surgeon General Healthy Weight Champion Recognition Program recipients. This is the recent application that we made to the state. I believe that you remember that Olga Connor was here recently with the Health Department, and I attached a copy of the application and the email and the press release, which is already on the city website, whereby the department has announced that we were recognized and that you will be presented with a, some sort of recognition, either a proclamation from their office or a certificate, and as soon as they have it, we will have the clerk place it on your next available agenda. Olga Connor will be here presenting you with this distinct award. This is very important for the city. A, it continues to put West Miami on a positive note and the map. It's also an award that can help us with future grant application that deals with nutrition programs, like in the West Miami Community Center and at the West Miami Recreation Center. As you know, we have a lunch program that is served by Miami-Dade County. It's a nutritional program, it's overseen by a nutritionist, and so, I think that the message that we're sending out to the community is a very positive one, and it may help us score more points with our grant applications in the future. So, you'll hear from us following this award, hopefully with future applications. The next item on the agenda are the parking meters, an update. The parking meters are alive and generating revenue for the city. Early estimates show that the meters can or will generate approximately $800, $1,000 in any good given month without the enforcement component. While it's still very early and we only have a month for gauging the effectiveness of the meters, this is a new revenue stream, and we're looking into other areas that may qualify for meters, and of course, we will bring you some recommendations when the time comes so that we can place additional meters along the commercial area. The next item in my report is the lighting of the tree ceremony, and of course, you did your recognitions this evening. We were so successful, the city received $4,889 over and above the expenses that we charge. There is a report from my assistant attached to my memo that details the sponsors and the sponsorship, as well as the expenses. We received a total of $9,350 in corporate contributions and some in-kind contributions as well, and the expenses totaled $4,461. So, we could either use the $4,800 towards the Easter egg hunt event, and I will be getting with Vice Mayor Blanes on the Easter egg hunt, and it'll be on the agenda at the next meeting, or you can designate it for another special event. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. It was a very well-attended ceremony and perhaps one of the best lighting of the tree ceremonies that we've ever had. The next item in my report talks to the issue of the comprehensive plan. As you know, we are behind schedule on the comprehensive plan. We actually need to start addressing this immediately. We do have a budget allocation, and I was contacted by Florida International University. They did our ear-based amendments and comprehensive plan. I've spoken to Professor Ned Murray. They have just actually contracted the services of Mr. Ralph Rosado, who will be working with FIU, and he's got a lot of experience in land use, and I believe that he will be the representative assigned to several cities who are undergoing the comp plan. We're going to, Juan and I will be meeting with them next week, and they will be providing a proposal to the city. Because they are a public entity, we may forego the issue of the bidding unless this commission decides that we should take it to bid and do something else, but we are addressing the issue of the comp plan at a time where our city's landscape is changing. This is the time that we need to look at what we've done, go through the capital improvement project list, check those items that we've met and complied with, and plan for the future. So, you'll be seeing more correspondence on this issue. The next item is something that is in your agenda this evening. Mr. Gomez, Fausto Gomez, will be here at the next meeting to talk to you a little bit about legislative priorities. However, I've received an invitation for the mayor and my office and Mr. Gomez to participate with the Dade County delegation and present our legislative priorities, and I wanted to recap a conversation that I had with Fausto last Friday evening regarding our legislative priorities and where those, where we should focus our energy. And of course, the community center, I'm sure that Chairman Luciano Suarez, our commissioner, will be working with Fausto and the mayor and the delegation to secure recurring dollars and possibly additional dollars. I must tell you that Fausto advised me that the elderly programs are in jeopardy. Some of our legislators from other areas of the state of Florida actually are talking about doing away with the funding for community centers in its entirety. So, this is going to be a very interesting topic, one that I'm sure Commissioner Suarez will be spending countless hours on, and hopefully, the city will make its presence known through the process that this is a very vital service that the city provides and has been since 1984. So, that's that. Obviously, another item of interest to all of you, especially Mayor Mujina and Commissioner Suarez, is the water projects. Fausto advises me that there is going to be funding for water projects. We're now into the modeling based on the legislative appropriation that you worked so hard to bring the $200,000 for. The engineers are working now to model the system so that we can basically take a snapshot of where the problem areas are at to see what kind of funding we could go after. So, this is going to be a very interesting session, to say the least. FERDAP, again, we have a pending application before the Florida Department of Recreation. We are working with a contracts officer, Mary Ann Lee. We have an application in that was filed by our grant writer, Robert Ruano, and hopefully, we can lobby in Tallahassee to make sure that our project gets funded. This is for the canopy, the overhang over the basketball courts. It's a big project, but one that promises to make our courts competitive for leagues to come in and play at the park so that we can showcase what we have and offer at the city. It's a matching grant. We are applying for an amount of $150,000 from the. We are applying for an amount of $150,000 from the state. So, this is going to be one of those projects that I'm hoping that through Chairman Blanes, our vice mayor, this is a project that will get funded in this coming legislative session. So, I think the city's got its work cut out for it. And of course, we will be pursuing any funding opportunity for law enforcement. And I haven't had this conversation with the chief, but I have exchanged some information. And we're closely monitoring what other communities are doing in terms of cameras and body cameras and other types of cameras for law enforcement officers. And I think that, you know, touching upon the invocation this evening, I think this city needs to make every effort possible and try to find every available dollar to protect our law enforcement officers and keep them safe so that they can continue serving the citizens. That being said, Fausto advised me that there's going to be lots of talk this year on pension That's an issue that's been going on, and I know that Vice Mayor Blanes is very familiar with this topic. I know that there's a bill before the President of the United States that talks about possibly changing the structure of existing pension plans. And so, that's going to be a big-ticket item this year in Tallahassee, red light cameras. And again, the issue of the community centers is going to be a hot topic. So, I'm sure all of you will have your work cut out for you. And that basically concludes that part of the report. We have calendared the mayor for January 26 at 10:30 in the morning so that we can present our legislative priorities before the Miami-Dade County delegation. The next item and the final item in my report is the Public Works Building. On Monday, January 5th, we met with Total Bank in an effort to pursue our conversation as it pertains to the credit line application that we will need for the construction of the Public Works Building, as approved by the mayor and city commission probably around a year, 18 months ago. A detailed memo will be prepared by my office prior to the next commission meeting regarding the financing of that project, which is now going out to bid. Correct, Mr. Penna?
The...
We are bidding out the portion for the design built for professional services. So, we are moving along now, and what we need is the financial component to it. So, that is coming, it's been placed on the agenda for the next commission meeting. And that being said, undoubtedly, we have hit the ground running this year in a very exciting fashion, and I suspect that we will have a very productive 2015. That concludes my report, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Mayor, I want to...
Any question for the manager? Go ahead.
No, I want to add something to what the manager has been talking about. I already spoke to Fausto and to some friends in Tallahassee, and the money for the food for the elderly has been under study because some cities, in our area and in other areas, the money has been misused. Certain cities have been mismanaged, misused, and now they have looking very careful, very close, the funds. We have a very good position because thanks God and thanks to our administration, our senior citizen, senior center do not have any problems. So, we have been using the money by the book, and we don't have any problem. Supposedly, each case will be, is already being analyzed. Each city with the money they have, what it has been doing. So, we have been doing well. So, I think we'll have to work, but we will prevail. We will get our money. It's going to be tough because, you know, it's going to be everybody looking at. But we are in the part of the good guys. So, I think if we keep fighting, as we already are doing that, and Fausto is working in Tallahassee, that we will be okay. So, but we still have to fight for that. In the water program, the water funds they are thinking about is going to be some money for the potable water. But we already have the, part of the study.
Yes.
But I think we may, I don't know, we may get this year another piece of money for that. So, we already have the study, but we need to continue if we are going to divide the city in grids, which is the more critical area of the city. You know, so, I think, I hope, according with the information I just been keeping, you know, just little things, that we may be lucky and get some money for that, too. That's the two things that's been working and calling friends, and so I think it will be okay. But still, we have to work. It's going to be an effort.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Rhonda, for your presentation, what you do.
Thank you.
So, any questions to the manager? Okay, next item.
Item six, report of the city attorney. The city attorney is excused this evening. Item seven, report of the city engineers. No reports. Item eight, committee reports. Report of the mayor.
No written report. All I want to say, it's, this is the first meeting of the year, and looking forward to a great future in the city of West Miami, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, if you, if you don't mind, I do have a committee report.
Absolutely.
On our, and I say our, on our tutoring program. I met with the city manager, with Jim from the rec, and our two tutors this past week, and we had a very, very encouraging meeting. I am so pleased to report that our tutoring program is going very well. Our tutors, I am so grateful to have them. They are excellent tutors. The children, it's a much-needed program, that's what they told us, and it's going so well that we are looking into putting another day of tutoring in. Right now, we have Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we are looking at adding Wednesdays for reading. So, it's going extremely well. The parents are very appreciative of the program. We are also looking at perhaps extending this into a summer reading program as well. And with that said, we are going to start a book drive. So, I'd like everyone to know, we're looking for donations of new, used books, elementary level, because we're going to start or enhance our library at the rec so the children can check out books during the summer for reading. And I know the city manager might have, might like to add something about our meeting, but I was very, very pleased with what I heard from the tutors and from Jim. So, thank you for giving me the approval to go on with this program because it's working.
Glad to hear.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I think Commissioner Rodriguez covered everything. I would like to point out that we also learned from one of the tutors who works at Silvania as a teacher that they have a tutoring program, but they're capped as far as the number of students that they have because of the tutor-child ratio. So, some of those kids that are unable to participate in the tutoring program offered by the school because of transportation needs or because they are at a full capacity, that do need the reading component, we believe that we are capturing those kids and helping them through our tutors to read so that they can be brought up to the grade level. As you know, the school system has been inundated in just about in every district with children from other, from Hispanic countries and obviously nationalities, and they sort of stay behind with reading. And the big-ticket item here is literacy. And if they can't read, they can't comprehend, they cannot do well in other subjects. So, our goal is to bring these kids up to the level where they need to be so that they can follow along in school and so that there is no child left behind in terms of learning. So, the program is going very well, and we're very excited. We also have a grant in that if awarded through the children's trust, that would be $150,000 that we've applied for, for a literacy program and a meal component program, which is where this award kicks in, that we've been, that will be issued by the state of Florida, for a nutritional snack program and the meal program for the lunch program at the West Miami Recreation Center during the summer. So, I think we're really accomplishing a lot, and as Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez said, you know, we're putting our tax dollars that are devoted to the rec center as part of that dedicated meal back into the community. We're putting it back into the future, which is our kids. So, a very encouraging report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner, I want, we thank you for your leadership. We thank you for bringing this program to fruition. And Madam Manager, we thank you for your efforts in making it all happen. This is a great worthwhile program that's going to benefit kids, is going to open up new horizons for them, you know, reading, you know, they're, they're going to love to read, and that definitely opens up new horizons for children that have not experienced, you know, the great joy that there is in reading and learning. So, we thank you.
Our tutors, Barbie and Laura, you could tell when they were talking, they're very passionate. They're very passionate about what they do. I'm sorry. Our tutors, Barbie and Laura, when they were talking, I was, I was so encouraged by how they spoke because they were very passionate and very excited about, and caring about what they were doing and how they were helping the children. So, it felt good to sit there and listen to them talk. It was, it was very, very encouraging.
Well, that's how you change the world, one, one child at a time.
That's it.
And we're at it, so.
And I have to say that they also spoke well about our recreational staff, that anything they've asked for, that the recreation, our recreational staff has been there to help them and support them. So, I want to thank Jim and his staff as well because they have, they are supporting the program, and everything they need, they're there for them. So, I want to thank Jim and his staff for that as well.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing Jim up.
Yes.
He is definitely a...
Thanks to Rhonda, thank you very much.
Cornerstone of our recreational department.
Reading is the basics of learning.
Absolutely.
So, it's very important, reading.
Absolutely.
You find people 25, 30 years old, they don't know how to read.
So, now, give me some books. Go and give me some books.
So, reading is very good.
I need books. We need books. More books.
Okay.
Anything else on the committee report? Okay, next item.
Item nine, citizen presentations, no presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Item 10, under and finished business. Item 10A, nomination of members to the code enforcement board by mayor and city commission. And this time, I inform you that it's Commissioner Rodriguez's turn to nominate, followed by Mayor Mujina and Commissioner Blanca.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Mr. Mayor, I'm very proud to nominate Lisa Koelo. I spoke with her, and she's very excited, and she's looking forward to hopefully being a member of our code enforcement board.
Excellent choice.
Thank you.
I believe she, she was on that board before, and she served very well, and glad to have her back.
Excellent.
I mean, that's, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you.
Okay?
You need, actually, we need a roll call vote on that, on that nomination.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes, she is very good.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Yes, Lisa Koelo is nominated for the code enforcement board by Commissioner Rodriguez.
Okay.
I believe there's another vacancy that needs to be addressed, and I believe, I need, it's only the mayors?
If the mayors, then the mayor's turn, then Commissioner Blanca turn to nominate.
Yes, I also have a nomination for, for the code enforcement, and it's a person that I'm sure that when I say the name, you're going to know him. He's a, he's a good neighbor. He's somebody that really, really cares about the city, the well-being of the city, the, you know, keeping the city clean, keeping the city. He's very, very proud of the city. His name is Michael Smart, and I would like to nominate Michael Smart. He lives very close by, City Hall. So, that's my nomination, if it's okay with the board.
Excellent choice.
Okay. Can you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Suarez for Michael Smart, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero.
Michael is the only other guy that I know that...
Sweep the streets.
Like me. I jump off my car, and that's the first thing I do. I see garbage across the street, I go pick up garbage. So, one day, I'm driving by, and I see Michael out there picking up the garbage.
He's the MCBS.
I thought I was the only one that did. He's no.
There are two other vacancies, the Mr., actually, one more vacancy or two alternate, I'm sorry, two alternate positions that need to be filled, and the next person to nominate is...
It'll be Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
And then it'll be, in this case, Vice Mayor Blanes.
I will nominate Michael Surri Sarian.
No, you got that right.
Mitchell, Mitchell.
But you got the last name right.
I got a good one. For me, he's Mitchell Z. I can't do the rest.
Okay.
Surri Arain.
Okay. He's a former member of the charter review board, and he will be welcome. Can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Rhonda, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
And we need, and we need one more alternate, and it would be the vice mayor's turn.
I will work on one. By next meeting, I'll have someone.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item 11, I'm sorry, item 10B. This is a resolution. This item was postponed at the meeting of December 3rd, and is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, joining other cities in the corridor property assessment, clean energy, pays district expressing its intent to utilize the uniform method of levying, collecting, and enforcing, enforcing non-advaloring assessments, which hereafter may be levied by the district in accordance with the provision of Section 1973632 Florida statutes, providing for approval of an agreement with the Miami-Dade County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector, providing for authorization and providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Translation for the rest of the world?
For the rest of the world, this, world, this is the Y Energy program, and Mr. Villalobos has done an extensive research, and I mean extensive. Commissioner Rodriguez, Mr. Villalobos, and I met last Friday. I believe there's a lot of unanswered questions, and Mr. Villalobos has asked us to very cautiously defer the item until he gets to speak to legal from Y Energy to make sure that the city in no way, shape, or form assumes any liability or financial or incurred financial liability that obviously has not been contemplated. And if I'm correct, Mr. Villalobos did encourage or recommend that a deferral on this item is probably appropriate at this time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the city attorney brought some questions to light that definitely I'd like to get clarifications on them. I'm not comfortable with, you know, what, what he brought up, so we want to get some clarifications, and he has done his due diligence. He is looking it over with a fine-tooth comb, and I appreciate that. He's, he's really looking at this to be sure that, it's a great program, we all agree that it's a great program. However, we must be sure that all the questions are answered before we proceed. So, with that, I would ask that we defer this item.
Motion.
The attorney, time.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item deferred. Is that till the next meeting, or?
Actually, I'd like to defer that indefinitely because I, I think he's going to need a little bit more time, and I don't want to keep putting it on the agenda and causing work. So, let's put it indefinitely. I'll stay very, very close contact with the city manager and the attorney, and as soon as those questions are answered and we feel comfortable to bring it back with everything clear and concise, we'll bring, put it back on the agenda. So, yes, indefinitely.
Yep.
Okay. Next item?
The next item will be item 11B. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and submit the interlocal agreement between the city of West Miami and the state of Florida Office of the State Attorney for the 11th Judicial Circuit of Florida to reimburse the state for the cost of the state attorney prosecution of certain criminal violations of the city's municipal code, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is, uh, every year, the state attorney's office prosecutes violations of municipal ordinances, um, and, and cases that are filed with their office, and because of the constitutional amendment under Article Five, the city is supposed to reimburse the state for their expenses. We have a budget line, a budgeted line item for this, and usually, it's very nominal. However, we have an agreement in place and we can't, uh, submit it to them without your blessing. So, this comes every year for, or every two years, actually, for renewal.
Second.
Okay, uh, oh, you need to call, it's a resolution, so yes, uh, please, call the roll.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item, this is a, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from Wells Fargo Bank on code enforcement liens for code violations at the city. Uh, the property located at sixty-five twenty-one Southwest Thirteenth Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date. And Mayor and members of the City Commission on this item, the city attorney and my office, we've been in contact with, uh, a company on behalf of Wells Fargo. I spoke with a person, a representative by the name of Abimeil Ochoa, and another person and by the name of Petru. I don't remember at this, uh, at this time, his last name. They were advised that this, um, commission will hear their request for mitigation if they come represented by legal counsel. Uh, the city attorney spoke several times with these representatives, and I myself did too, and they were advised that we had a meeting tonight at seven-thirty, and they, that they were advised to come with legal counsel. Obviously, they are not present, so I would like, um, to, I mean, or it is to, to your consideration to defer this item until next meeting, to, to just leave it open for them in case they had an emergency or something and couldn't attend.
I need a motion for deferral.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item?
Next item is the item eleven D, discussion in reference to City of West Miami legislative priorities stood for two thousand and fifteen by Mayor Mojina.
We've, we've covered that, and I would encourage you, Mr. Mayor, the next item is the resolution to wait to hear from our legislative consultant at the next meeting. Uh, we'll have a draft resolution ready with a priority, uh, list, and, and after you and, and, and Mr. Gomez meet, then go ahead and adopt your resolution. So, I would ask that you defer the resolution end of this until after you hear from Mr. Gomez at the next meeting.
Items D and E are deferred.
Can, uh, can you read it? Uh, can you read item E, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item E, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, adopting the two thousand and fifteen legislative priorities for the City of West Miami, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Defer to the meeting of January?
Need a motion for deferral?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Defer them the next meeting.
January twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
Yes. Uh, next item, item eleven F. This is a report by the city manager regarding the grant award by Miami-Dade County Fiscal Year two thousand and fourteen fifteen Community Grants Program, second quarter by city manager.
Uh, thank you. As, as noticed via email and this evening, there's a memo before you that we issued regarding our application for the second quarter of two thousand and fifteen. Um, it's a grant, it's a community grant program that is, um, pretty much a cultural, has a cultural, uh, connotation to it. On Monday, January fifth, two thousand and fifteen, we received the notice from the county through our grant writer, Robert Uano, advising us that our application in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for a grant was approved for a reduced amount of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. The city has a reserve match of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars that has been accrued at the end of September thirtieth, and this should be two thousand and fourteen as our required project match. Um, Robert, um, and has been in touch with the county and is working with Roxanna so that we can get the grant packet, which we must execute and have back to them by January sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. That being said, um, our event date, it has been scheduled for March fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, which is less than two, it's about two months away, uh, and two weeks before your Easter egg hunt. So, um, that being said, we have a budget, uh, for an amount of about thirteen, estimated at about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to put all the components together. I spoke to the mayor this afternoon, briefly. I spoke to him yesterday, and I've, um, spoken to the commissioners individually, uh, briefly to talk to you about this. But obviously, there are some missing pieces to the event, because it is a cultural, community grant. Um, we are waiting for the necessary items that we need to comply with from the county, and I am certain, Mr. Mayor, has discussed with you, that we will be required to have a committee, um, of individuals that are obviously in the field of, of art and culture that would perhaps, uh, give us some suggestions on how to best put this event together. Again, we have s- less than sixty days. I've, uh, actually, um, added Mr. Quintana to the, to the team. As you know, our employee, Mr. Quintana, he's a, a jack of all trades and he's very artistically inclined. Um, he has prepared a very, uh, I want to call it pintoreco, um, logo.
Picturesque.
Picturesque, yeah, there we go, of the Art and Music Festival, which is attached to your agenda packet. And he did this, uh,
It's at the end of the packet.
It's, it's actually, he did this in about a five-minute period of time.
It's gorgeous.
Um, it is attached to the report.
Other than the back.
Actually, this is very nice if we want to have posters and sell them to the community at the event. It's very, very artistic, and, um, so, Mr. Quintana, I believe, will provide a lot of artistic talent to the event, and I know that the mayor has some thoughts. This is obviously a committee that is very close and dear to his heart, and before we do anything, we need to have a blessing to move forward, because we are going to need sponsors. We're going to have to raise, uh, at least seventy-five hundred dollars to meet the, the budget estimates and the goal of the program. That being said, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. This is something that, uh, I mean, is very dear to my heart. You know, some, some years ago, we had, uh, an event, which basically was a very, uh, classical event that we had every year. Uh, this time, we, we're looking at something more appealing to not a certain group, but also to, you know, um, all, all the groups. So, you know, we want to call it an art, a music festival, and, uh, we can have the opportunity of, of showcasing the City of West Miami, uh, and also bringing all the community to, to the City of West Miami. We can have artists exhibit, we can have, uh, we can have music, uh, we can have, and these are different ideas that, that we have. We can have, uh, uh, you know, Domino's, uh, tournament, we can also think about, uh, our roots and, and, and bring, uh, people, uh, from different cultures, eh, and, you know, within the City of West Miami. And, uh, but again, this is something that we need to come up with a committee, and, um, what, I mean, a few suggestions that I have, like, for instance, uh, one other person that I've been talking to, I don't know if you're familiar, uh, with, uh, Benitez, uh, actually, Umberto Benitez is a very famous artist in the, in the community, and the wife, Lisette Benitez, which is a dear friend. Uh, it's, it's a person that, that is very, uh, very well-rounded. Uh, she has been able to put events, uh, in, in other, other cities, and, uh, they have exhibited in New York, they have exhibited locally and so on, and, uh, you know, like any committee, you know, you need a share, uh, that's one of the suggestions that I have. Also, you know, our dear, um, you know, former mayor, Belia Yedra Cruz, you know, she's, uh, very, uh, you know, uh, close to the arts, uh, and that will be another suggestion, perhaps for somebody in, in, to be part of that committee. Uh, so, so they, I mean, it's not just my idea or your idea, but people that actually do this for a living, that, that they can, um, you know, uh, be part of that committee to put this event together, and as, uh, the manager said, we don't have a lot of time. Uh, but that's the date, that it was imposed by us, by the county, you know, so in other words, here's the money and here's the date. So, um, we, thus, thus, we got to work with that. So, I hope, uh, we get a blessing. I think it's an excellent opportunity to showcase the city, to, to, you know, uh, I, like I always say, City of West Miami is a jewel, then, uh, unfortunately, a lot of people don't know about it, but, uh, but I think we, we're in, or fortunately, so, but I, I, I think, uh, we're in the, in the right track. So, sorry about being long-winded, but I'm very excited about this.
You should be.
Okay, so, any comments?
All in favor, say aye.
All right, so, all in favor, say aye.
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 Yes.
I would like to pledge to some type of authority, uh, as a, uh, not a corporate donor, a person.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wow, this is very nice.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate the sitting on the office. It was a slam dunk.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor, along those lines, uh, as you know, there's a meeting this Friday, uh, Friday morning, uh, we've scheduled that, uh, with your office, um, with Ms. Benitez, and obviously, I've already reached out to, uh, former mayor, Belia Yedra Cruz, also. Um, I got a phone call back from her, but we were here, uh, setting up for the meeting, so I'll get back to her tomorrow and, and obviously, uh, put a committee together, and I'm sure that that's going to be one of the requirements that the county will have for us. I'm also going to reach out to Commissioner Rebecca Sosa on your behalf tomorrow, so that we can obviously, uh, plan a, a very nice event. There's not a whole lot of time, um, and, and again, we have an Easter egg hunt two weeks following this event, so we'll be working hard.
Okay, uh, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item eleven G, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, appointing members to the city's cultural affairs committee for the upcoming March fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen cultural event, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission. You've been on in favor, but we need a motion in a second.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay.
And the committee members, Mr. Mayor, are Lisette Benitez?
Lisette Benitez.
We also have, uh, Mayor, uh, former Mayor, Belia Yedra Cruz.
Of course, you know, pending confirmation.
Pending confirmation.
Any, any, uh, other person that, that, I believe, uh, the, we have an, uh, art, um, we spoke, I'm sorry, I forgot the name.
Josie Ramirez has expressed an interest. She also has an art gallery. Actually, I've known Josie for many years. Um, she's also a lover of, of the arts and has a passion for the arts. She has a gallery on Seventy-second, and she submitted her resume for consideration, um, and she would love to join in and serve and give some ideas as to what we can do to put a, a nice event and get in line for future funding opportunities. So, if you accept that, uh, Mr. Uano has gone through her, uh, resume. Robert is very in tune with the arts, because he helps in the City of Coral Gables to put events together, so he would like to participate as well. Robert Uano, our grant writer.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, can you call the vote, please?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have said, Robert maybe can be in the committee also. How many members do we need?
I would say to be on the safe side, I think we should have five.
So, we can move before if he agrees to?
So, it would be, uh, Mayor Yedra Cruz, it would be, um, Ms. Benitez, Josie Ramirez, Robert Uano, and we're going to need one more, one more person in the committee.
So, think of anybody that, that you think, uh, could serve in this board. Committee, I'm sorry.
Because time is of the essence and the clock is ticking, I don't know whether it would be appropriate for you all to think about someone and submit a name, and I will pass on the information to the commissioners, um, because we'd like to call for an organizational meeting as early as Monday of next week.
Okay, is that okay with everybody?
Absolutely.
I got a question from someone in the room. Mr. Aswell, you want to start? I appreciate all, uh, I have zero talent. No, that's not true. And, uh, a man of, uh, with the scope of the wisdom that you have.
Mr. Aswell, let me, okay, we have a lot of people who are very talented, eh, you know, from the arts, but, uh, we need somebody to ground those people, from the business point.
There you go.
There you go.
We'd all do respect, uh, I'm not going to say no, but I think that
Think about it.
No, I think you need to think about it. There are times where I am capable of being the ultimate diplomat, uh, and as you know, there are times when I get confounded, uh, when there are established turfs and not open-mindedness. My experience is that artists, and chefs, by the way, who I consider artists, uh, are, uh, they're a breed, and, uh, they tend to get rather transfix in, uh, their own viewpoints. And I got to tell you, if I'm on a committee and that presents itself, I will do harm, not for you.
Okay, all right. We got it. We got it. Next. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Five zero, item passes. Uh, next item is item eleven H, request for proclamation in reference to Law Enforcement Appreciation Week, sponsored by Mayor Mojina.
Yes, I, um, we, we have talked about this subject, but I think, uh, I mean, Chief, you want to come on over? I'm sure that we're going to get your support on this, so we need your guidance. Uh, this is something that actually started with, uh, um, with our governor, uh, and, uh, and I think, uh, I think it's a good, good cause, and I, I asked for this item to be put on the agenda, so we need your guidance over here.
And I appreciate it, and, um, the troops that are out there every day, uh, in West Miami and in all South Florida, all over this great country, appreciate, um, when people recognize the job that they do. Uh, they go out day in, day out, miss birthdays, miss Christmases, and so forth, and, uh, it's, it's nice to be appreciated, and I know that they will, uh, think very highly of you and the, and the commission, uh, for this proclamation. Be very important to them, the men and women that are on the street.
Okay, and, uh, and since we, we cannot talk among each other, uh, outside the dais, uh, then, uh, co-joint with, uh, Commissioner Candy Blanca, and so.
I will get with Commissioner Blanca.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this is a proclamation that the governor has asked to declare the week of January fifth as Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. I would encourage the chief and, um, the chairman for the police department, Commissioner Blanca and the mayor to, uh, possibly invite, uh, the members of the department, those that are not on duty, maybe, um, at the next meeting, even though the week has passed. But I think they need to know
Yeah.
that you appreciate them, that you understand the nature of their, of their work. I can tell you, I lived it all my life, and I still live it through my, my son and son-in-law, and it's, it's a very difficult profession, and I think that, um, we're living in very, very tough times, and law enforcement officers are, are just getting killed in every place in this country. Statistics, I think, have, are up by fifty-six percent nationwide of killings, or, or just absolute brutal, senseless killings of law enforcement officers, and I think we need to make our community aware that they live in a, in a safe haven, but that is because of the type and kind of dedication that we have from our department, so.
I think that's a good idea, and they will, they will be, and they will be appreciated.
Mr. Mayor, maybe could we possibly put something on the marquee as a thank you and that this is the appreciation week and put it on the website?
Website as well.
That's a great idea.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Very good idea.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, next item, go to the order. Anything for the go to the order?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Okay. Well, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Happy New Year. Okay, we have recommended the meeting. We, personally, I forgot one item. We have been invited once again to participate in the Three Kings Parade this coming Sunday. And I want to extend the invitation to, I have been invited and I want to extend the invitation to the, to the commissioners, you know, so if you want to participate, you're welcome to come. It will be Sunday. It will start around eleven to, to gather and then the parade goes on for a couple hours from like twelve to, to two. So just wanted to, to let you know. So if, you know, I'm extending the invitation, anybody is welcome, okay?
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. All those in favor say aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I, I had a long day.